Wow.
Maybe luck.
The show's waiting for Hunt County. There we are.
We're up. Okay, good morning, everyone. Today is August the 10th, 2021. It's 10:00 a.m. We're here for the regular county commissioners' court meeting. At this time, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance to our flags.
Shall we bow? The most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life. We ask you to, if you will, bless this meeting, this meeting for the public that we represent. We ask you for knowledge, and we ask you to be right in the decisions that we make. Make them righteous. We ask you for wisdom, patience with each other, and understanding as we go through this court. We ask you to continue blessing this great country we live in. Bless our health care workers. Bless our veterans. In cross name, we ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, indivisible.
Regret that. All right. You're getting lost sometimes. All right. We got Commissioner Hutchins here, Commissioner Straight, Martin, Harrison. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting this morning. Commissioners, you got the minutes from July 27th, 2021, regular session. I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. Commissioners, court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Does anybody here wish to address the court today?
Your Honor, I believe this gentleman here was wanting to speak.
Art, you got something? Would you like to address the court? Huh?
I don't even want to be up here. I'm going to get a divorce over.
Oh, your wife might be happy with that, so.
You're at the right court.
You know me.
Oh, I know you.
You know my wife?
I know your wife.
Well, I would get a divorce.
I know. That's what I said.
Straight as an arrow.
Uh-huh. I understand.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I couldn't hear you because I don't have my ear plugs on.
Let me tell you this. If she didn't know it, she knows it now because we're on television. What'd you say?
I'm after you. You know what I'm up there for.
Well, I don't.
What I need to do? I need to talk about it?
All right.
Did I call that?
Who knows? It's computers. It's technology we know nothing about.
I don't know. I think that thing need be turned down.
I think it's your hearing. You can set it off.
I've been here before, and I didn't get saved by it.
There'll be a reason for that. There you go. All right, Art, you got three minutes. I'll give you a little bit more if you need it.
I appreciate it. Not on me.
Okay.
I just need a tin horn, have my address, and I don't want to cause any statues. Road building, and I built a lot of roads that I paid out of my pocket. In fact, I'd like to have the money back for water riding on I put in. But anyway, I need a tin horn. The 55 acre goes through a tin horn. I don't know what's going to... I don't know what to do. I complain about it. You get me through the other day after all this time. She don't complain, and she said, "You know what?" I wouldn't have talked to him, built my home on this place if I'd not flooded that bad.
So where do you need a tin horn? In the county road? At your driveway? Or?
Where's the dad?
At his house?
Where I live.
Art, I don't know where you live.
You know where I live?
No.
I live about 3110. No, 3110, I'm sorry.
3110, yeah.
Guess that's right. And we go about a mile from 1737 into Kerr. And I live up on a hill with that tin horn. All that land, all that several lakes, and all, come right into that tin horn. And I don't want to cause no statues because I like people, and I don't want to...
Have you put in for a permit?
He's got a culvert. It's just not working. You got a culvert. It's just not working, right?
It's not big enough.
Yep.
I learned that in Iowa Department years ago.
He lives close to QMF Steel. Right before you get to, you know, that kind of S curve there before you get to it? He lives almost, when you're coming off 1737, your driveway's just nearly right there, isn't it?
Do you live? If you're coming from old QMF Steel, you make the right turn, you go down the hill and turn left, and you have it up?
He's on the right.
I live right past him, and you take a left past his house, you know where he lives?
On 17... You turn, when you turn left on 1737?
Yes.
And heading to QMF Steel. When you get down there, it makes a hard right-hand turn. That first turn, his driveway's right there.
Yes. You have that flooding down there on your property before you get to that spot?
Been that way for 16 years.
Well, that flooding, we can't know where it's flooding, but we can fix it. But we can fix a culvert if we need it.
I always, when I'm building private roads or county roads, I always put two tin horns, and that way I don't have to worry about it.
You talking about across your driveway or across the county road?
He... It's across his driveway is what he's needing, Phillip. There's a... He thinks the tin horn that's there is not big enough, or it needs two of them, that it's flooding. So if you can just... Commissioner Martin, I'll go look at it, and I can get with you.
I... You won't ever hear that because I don't want to get a divorce over it.
Okay.
If my girl says something, or my father-in-law says something, you listen to them all.
Yeah, you listen to the Wallaces. They won't go away, will they?
My wife knows you well.
I know. I've known her all my life.
I've known you.
Yep. I understand. Good to see you, Art. Anybody else?
The sheriff too, Ward Ego. I think you're going to make...
If nobody else, if anybody's online, they can go to our website. And if you're viewing us by video, you can go to our website, huntcounty.net, and there's a banner there for questions. And you can put a comment in there or your phone number, and we can call you back later in the meeting. And we'll check that later in the meeting to give anybody online time to address the court. We have no old business. We go to new business, consent calendar. Commissioners, you got the consent calendar in front of you? Is there any questions on the consent calendar? I guess I've got one. Can we remove... We'll remove four. I need to talk about four. Anybody else got anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion for consent calendar except for item four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I guess, Phillip, you're requesting this truck to be transferred from you that was on loan to the special crew while we were waiting on a Enterprise vehicle to get here?
Yes, sir. I had talked to Richard Hill a long time ago when they decided they were going to replace those with rental. And he said, "Yeah, that'll be good. We can have it then." And then, since then, they've got that rental truck for that crew. This was Richard Hill's vehicle that he drove. And at that time, he had signed it over and asked him to go on board since we got that other... Since we got that other, you know, vehicle that he was supposed to rent in, take that in place.
Yeah, but the intent was, as we sold these vehicles, those vehicles would go back in his budget to help offset the cost of the new vehicles he's getting through Enterprise. So...
Okay, let me ask you this. I believe we'd get more usage out of us keeping it in our inventory versus, I think, it's paid for, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. But right now, vehicles are bringing an all-time high. We've been getting $10,000 and $15,000 for vehicles that are very old with a lot of miles on them. This one will bring quite a bit of money. They'll almost pay for what we just purchased on Enterprise. I mean, it'll get up there close to it. And that was the whole purpose that the court voted on, to go to Enterprise, was to update our fleet of vehicles. And it appears to me that we're still just trying to go backwards.
Well, what our problem is, is we can't get any vehicles, whether they're rented or buying them out, for the simple reason they're not available.
I understand that. So have you got one that just is dying and got to go down?
Say it again?
If you got one, you're going to take the option and sell it and replace it with this one?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely. We have one that we can turn in. That's why, to us, a 2018 is very much of an upgrade. This is a 2018. We have vehicles in our, you know, we have some good ones. But yes, I have one that we can sell. There's no doubt about that.
Okay. So you're going to commit to sell one, so we at least got some revenue coming in to offset the cost of the Enterprise because we can continue to upgrade our fleet?
Oh, yes. And like I said, I can't even get a Peterbilt that we've had over a year, much less a vehicle. It's taken y'all, or it's taken the county in these rental things over a year.
Oh, I know. And it's not going to get any better for a while. I just want to make sure we're not adding to our vehicle fleet when we're trying to improve our fleet.
No, it'll stay the same because I will sell.
Okay. All right. That was my question. All right. Well, I make a motion. We approve action item four then, our consent calendar number four.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action item number one, I'm going to postpone until after executive session. Action item two, certificate of completion for Becky Landrum, County Clerk of Texas Public Information Act. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action item number three, certificate of completion of Becky Landrum, County Clerk in the Texas Open Meetings Act. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action item number four, the reappointment of Jeanette Mosier to the TERS Board to a new two-year term effective August 10th, 2021, expires August 9th, 2023. I believe Jeanette's been serving on that board for quite a while. Yeah, five or six years. She's a past employee of Encore, I believe, has a lot of experience in economic development. I think she's a good representative to that board.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I deal with that board all the time, and she is very much on the ball. She knows what she's talking about and asks the right questions, and is a good watcher of the public.
She's been a good public servant for a long time, too.
Yes.
So entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action item number five, a resolution of the Commissioners' Court to contract with Hunt County Health Department pharmacist. Did we get the name correct?
Yes, it's Sheila.
It is Sheila Dawson. Okay.
And I corrected it on the second page of what we have. On the agenda, it says, "It's a good year to write, putting in letters, but Sheila Dawson." And what I did was basically just use a blank form and left the months and also the dollars that she would pay as well.
Okay, Commissioners, Sheila has been our pharmacist for several years when we were... At some point, she resigned because she'd been doing it for a long time, and I think we were paying her about $400 a month or something, or $200 a month. And anyway, we had updated and asked her to stay a little bit longer because we thought we were switching the health clinic over to Caribide. And when that didn't work out, we still had to have a pharmacist. So this is to get a new contract with her to continue to be our pharmacist. That's what we're trying to clean up. So I'd entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Well, and he's been a villain, those items.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, I think, didn't she miss a few checks because the contract ran out?
Just the one, but it was originally $100.
$100, yeah. Okay. Right. So we need to set a new number there, too?
We do, yes.
Okay. But do we owe her anything back?
Just one month.
We owe her one month. So we need to start, be effective a month ago? Is that what we need to do?
Well...
We need to pay her for the past and go on and continue.
I believe the only month that she filled in that he didn't retro-activate the payments.
Okay.
So she's only one month behind right now?
Correct.
Okay.
So we can make it effective July 1st?
July 1st, yeah.
And the amount of money is... But we bumped it to how much? Because we just divided it by whatever was left, thinking it was going away.
Correct. You bumped it to 400, but it was originally 100.
100. But she's having to do like 20 hours a year of training and seminars and traveling and all, and $100 a month certainly wasn't worth it, so...
And my... Didn't Richard Hill and them try to go find somebody else to fill in this position as well, and couldn't find anybody willing to do it?
Could not find them. That is true. Yeah. She's the only one who's been willing to do it for us. I'm okay with the 400 a month. The court is...
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's well worth it. I mean, it's an important function. She's got a professional license. She has to get her continuing ed to do these inspections for us, so I don't... So we entertain a motion for approval, action item number five, with the start date of July 1st, 2021, at a payment of $400 a month.
Second.
End date on July, or it's probably December 31st, or whatever year. They need to be three years now, or...
I'd make it... I'd make it '23, probably. December 31st, '23. That's like 30 months.
Yeah.
I would agree.
Then we just put this on the calendar, review it here.
Yeah, okay. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action item six, the acknowledgement of an order assigned by district judges sitting the salaries of the county auditor, assistant auditor, and district court reporters. Entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action item number seven, the appointment of Hunt County Variance Assessment Committee. Commissioners, that was in your packet from David Jones, trying to shortcut protest when they're trying to get variances in the Health Department, or I guess in the Community Development. Either one, is that correct? Is it just for the Health Department?
The way that read, it's also read for community development.
Well, that's kind of the way I read it. That's why I was asking you. Is it for you also?
Yes. The way it's written on it is for him.
It would affect maybe all the non-stuff needs to go through the committee.
Right. I agree.
There can't be variance during the process.
Your Honor? I make a motion. We strike this whole thing. I'll tell you what, the reading on the whole thing, basically, it takes the authority away from this Commissioners' Court, if you look at that last number. But it also, it's involving property development, application, permits, when you leave the Commissioner of a burden of having a schedule. There's no burden for this court, in my opinion, to do the will of the people. Even in the government code, it says that we may, in fact, make regulations having to do with plaques, sewage, health, and everything else. Okay? And people need a way to go on and say, "Hey, can we have a variance?" Well, this last letter, this last letter says, "Upon consideration and active discussion among the committee, they shall vote to determine whether a variance shall be granted to the applicant." This has taken our duties away from us. I think that this does not need to move any forward, and that's the way I feel.
Well, Phillip, I don't know that I totally agree with all that. All it is, is it's a step that gives them a chance to try to resolve it. If it's not resolved to everybody's satisfaction at that level, they can always come to the court. That's not telling them they can't ever come to the court.
That last sentence says that they shall make the decision.
Yeah. But it say their decision is final. It just says they'll make a decision. So all it's doing is, instead of one person making a decision in a department, then they're going to a committee and see if they can work it out and make the applicant happy where that everybody's satisfied, including the court. If the court didn't like it, we can have it brought here. And I don't... I mean, I trust all these people to do a good job, and they've always done a good job for us, so I don't anticipate us having an issue. And if the public has an issue and they're not satisfied, they can always come to the court. Is that not right, Daniel? Am I saying that correctly?
I mean, I didn't look at this. I mean, I can look at that and give you an answer.
Well, let's, instead of striking, let's just table it till the next meeting and give a chance to get Richard and them in here next time, and you a chance to review that and then make sure that we're okay. And I mean, I understand what they're trying to do. They're trying to make it easier for the public and speed it up and not have to wait for us. And if it's something that...
People want to come to a place that can make a decision and appeal. This place, this county court, these are the ones that adopted most of these rules and regulations. Otherwise, your sewer department, health, and all that has to do with TECQ. We have rules and regulations that we put in to operate that. They would need to come before this Commissioners' Court if they desire variance. The thing about it is, and even in the government code that allows this to happen, we had one of this last week that called me and said, "Who do I see? Because they're saying I can't have this." I said, "I would contact the person that's over the health, as far as the sewer application." And that was Richard Hill. Well, who do I have? Who else could I go through? To me, it would be before the Commissioners' Court. We owe the people a step up to the Commissioners' Court to say, "Hey, we've got a problem. We don't need to cut them off down there and have a three committee say, 'Well, we don't agree with this, so we're going to stop it.'" That's wrong. And that last... There's a lot of this. This would have to do with our planning subdivision rules and regulations, the ones that we're having to do right now with twerking, planting, and zoning and all this. This is adverse to what is in our rules books because they can always come, even the planning and zoning, make an agreement, they have to come before the Commissioners' Court. That's the way the law was brought in. This right here is the administration and the government controlled, not out here where one person knows everything and decides it needs to go on and be left as it is. If you will, look into it, Daniel, but that's what my problem is.
Judge, I understand the point. I disagree with it of trying to expedite these decisions. I agree that we certainly at least need to push to table this or postpone this, get Daniel involved. I would not want to adopt this as written at a minimum. And I would note that if we're talking about a committee that makes a recommendation to the Commissioners' Court, I see the good point to that. I am also nervous and uneasy with this last sentence. To me, the way I read it vests authority in that committee that I don't think we can vest in them and don't think we should vest in them either. So I would also agree and make a motion if we need to postpone this for future consideration.
Yeah, we'll just table it for next meeting and give everybody a chance to look at it.
Jessica handed me the email from David Jones. Is there more than this?
That's it.
Okay. So basically, what y'all are interested in is what authority would this group have if you appointed it? And does that include an appeal process that comes before the Commissioners?
Understand this. Basically, I talked to Mr. Jones earlier, and this came from up above.
Yeah.
Whether it was the Commissioner or county judge, I don't know. But the thing about it is, he couldn't answer half my questions himself, and he wrote the letter.
Well, you wrote the letter...
Yes.
But what this, I mean, you can't just adopt this. I mean, it's going to have to be, have an appeal process...
Thank you.
...that may be already laid out in the subdivision regulations. But I didn't look at that. I mean, I can look at that, this over the next week.
Yeah. Basically, all these appeals and references to, in our planted subdivision rules and regulations and all that?
Yeah.
We don't have a committee to do this. We have a person, that gentleman right there, that keeps us within. And if he has a problem, he comes to the Commissioners' Court to deference and says, "Hey, we got this." We don't need people. Basically, we have a person from Community Development. That would probably be him, or if he designated, choose someone else. Then we have the Health Department, Environmental Service, and Hunter County Homeland Security. Well, and actually, Alex is all one, an actuality. So basically, that's what I'm saying, that's... The Commissioners' Court is where this needs to be decided, not by a committee.
Well, we're looking to...
Thank you.
Okay. Action item number eight, upgrade of approximately 3,040 feet of County Road 1101 from dirt to rock, precinct one, at county's expense.
Your Honor, I make a motion. We approve this upgrade of 3,400 feet, sorry, 3,040 feet of County Road 1101 from dirt to rock at the county's expense.
Second. Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action item number nine, upgrade of approximately 6,370 feet of County Road 1101 from rock to oil sand in precinct one at county's expense.
Your Honor, I make a motion. We approve this upgrade of 6,370 feet of County Road 1101 from rock to oil sand in precinct one at the county's expense. And I believe this should say that this is from a capital improvement.
Are both, were both of those supposed to be?
Yes, they should.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. All opposed, motion carries. Action item 10, upgrade of approximately 2,300.9 feet of County Road 1118 from rock to oil sand in precinct one, money is in escrow.
Your Honor, I make a motion, we approve this upgrade of 2,300.9 feet of County Road 1118 from rock to oil sand, money is in escrow.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 11, the upgrade of approximately 1,800 feet of County Road 1201 from dirt to rock in precinct one, at County's expense, coming out of capital improvement?
Correct. Your Honor, I make a motion, we approve this upgrade of 1,800 feet of County Road 1201 from dirt to rock in precinct one, at the County's expense, out of our capital improvement.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 12, the upgrade of approximately one mile of County Road 2532 from rock to oil sand in precinct two, at County's expense. I assume that's be the, out of the capital improvement?
Capital improvement, yes. I'll make a motion, we approve the upgrade there of a mile, a mile of road, County Road 2532 from rock to oil sand, precinct two.
At County's expense and out of capital improvement?
At County's expense, I'm sorry.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 13, upgrade of approximately 3,696 feet of County Road 2180 from rock to oil sand in precinct two, at County's expense.
Make a motion, we approve the upgrade of County Road 2180, 3,696 feet, from rock to oil sand, at the County's expense, under capital improvement.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 14, the upgrade of approximately 448.8 feet of Red Cloud from rock to oil sand in precinct three, at the County's expense. And we're gonna come measure that, Phillip.
Yes, sir. We've got three of these, 15 and 16, but this 448 is a crossroad. I make a motion, we allow this to be done at, at our expense in reference to capital improvement.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 15, the upgrade of approximately 475.2 feet of Geronimo from rock to oil sand in precinct three, at County expense.
Your Honor, this is the road next door to the other one. I make a motion, we allow this construction to have with use of capital improvement from rock to oil.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 16, upgrade of approximately 501.6 feet of Blackfoot from rock to oil sand in precinct three, at County's expense.
Your Honor, I make a motion, we allow this construction to do, take place, rock to oil, at County expense, and also it'll be with capital improvement. It's the last road in that subdivision.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 17, upgrade of approximately 1,430 feet of County Road 4106 from dirt to rock in precinct four, County's expense.
Make a motion to approve 1,430 feet of County Road 4106, upgrade from dirt to rock, precinct four, capital improvement.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 18, upgrade of approximately 2,680 feet from County Road, County Road 4125 from rock to oil sand in precinct four, at County's expense.
Make a motion to approve approximately 2,680 feet of County Road 4125, upgrade from rock to oil sand, capital improvement.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 19, upgrade of approximately 1,510 feet of County Road 4808 from rock to oil sand in precinct four, at County's expense.
4818, Judge.
Uh, 4818, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve approximately 1,510 feet, upgrade of County Road 4818 from rock to oil sand, capital improvement.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 20, request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road 2316 in precinct two.
Make a motion, we approve the request of construction electrical power distribution under County Road 2316, under usual stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 21, replata lots five and six of Broken Branch Estates in precinct two. Brian, you want to update us?
Uh, we've had a-
Right. Brief us first, then we'll open it up for public hearing.
President Lynn Donner owns two lots in Broken Branch Estates. When she put her house in and built her driveway, she got the driveway below the lot line. She's going to sell the bank of lockdown, so she's putting that lot line over just a little bit. Had a couple calls with the fire and the neighbors due to the, the company's, you know.
Once they understood, he's just to clean up, clean up them, right on one lot. All right. At this time, we'll open it up to a public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak about the replata lots five and six of Broken Branch Estates, please come forward. There's anything online, no comments online? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, entertain a motion for the approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 22, a preliminary plat of Wood Creek Edition in precinct three. Brian?
All right, guys, this is a, this is subdivision that's proposed. We've had a couple meetings with the developer engineer, and, uh, we've pulled down this, this, this final plat. For this preliminary plat, we had some, some discussion between the designing engineer and Mark Dickman regarding some pieces of existence, creeks on the property. We've gone in and have gotten notes stating that we're not going to move or reconstruct it or, or something like that. We also had to determine minimum culvert sizes to get across the creek. We also had to establish minimum finished floor elevations on the lots that were completed by them. There again, this is a preliminary plat, we have construction plans that are approved and have been reviewed by the, by Mark Dickman, approved by him. I don't have the email yet. I do have text confirmation from him stating that everything will be okay with the creek and they left to go with the-
Natural, yeah.
The surrounding, the, the natural field, the surroundings.
And this was not a flood zone, flood area, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, this, this was pretty unusual. Like Brian said, we met with them a few times about it, because they didn't want to lose the ambiance of that creek, and if we'd have had to do the draining, drainage ditches in the back and reroute the creeks, it was just gonna mess up the whole site. So, we, we talked at length with the engineers to make sure we weren't creating any problems. Their size and the culverts for, one or two of those houses will have to put houses on the other side of the creek, on the backside. So, we had them go ahead and size those culverts for their driveways on the plat, so that when they go to build it, we have something that they have to build too, and that it was engineered, and, do I know?
It's on the base of the plat.
It's on, yeah.
It's on D restriction or a file R, maybe that is.
Yeah, we, we're trying, we asked them to put it everywhere they could put it, make sure there's no confusion in, in, in doing that. So, what the ultimate deal is, we're kind of waiving some of our requirements for some drainage easements that we'd normally get in the back, because they're gonna be in the creek area. So, that's really the only major difference that, that they're asking us.
Yeah, Brian, Your Honor, these will be addressed in the final plat, correct, as far as the, as far as the culvert size and stuff like that?
Along the base of the plat, along the minimum finished floor elevation.
Good man.
Entertained a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 23, preliminary plat of Cedar Ridge in precinct four. Brian?
This is a, just west of Commerce, uh, nice big lot. It's road on the two sides. One of the, one of the roads, road on the west side, County Road 4509, already, pretty nice oil sand road. It's a nice smooth road. The road along the south side of the subdivision, County Road 4511, is not, it's dirt. It has a nice wide driveway that's cleared back. Utilities are, are back substantially off the road, unlike what you see in the lot area. Pretty easy road to upgrade without having to move ditch. Big lots, even fully developed, you're not talking about a significant coverage of improvements or structures on these lots. It's a lot of fall there. Again, natural, natural flow of water is difficult better than trying to correct that water, where it doesn't necessarily want to go.
It falls like 30 feet or something, doesn't it, across, or 50 feet?
If not more.
Huh?
If not more.
Yeah, it's about, it's on the top.
60 feet is vertical fall.
Fall across it in, in a northeast direction. Yeah.
It's the, the seven and a half acre lot, 12, over there on Far East End, that's the lowest point. That's where all the water's thrown. The developer has accommodated that by increasing that block size to give those people some, some good building property that's, that's not falling down into that creek.
Or the water going.
Uh, clearly, this preliminary, this is on violation. There will be some, some road upgrades going on before, uh, the-
Have they talked to Commissioner Harrison?
Sir?
Have they talked to you about the upgrade?
Not, not about the upgrades yet. And then that, you know, that road is, is, is a good dirt road right now. The other road that runs north and south is black land, so they're right at the verge of, of, of being on a good road to upgrade.
Yeah.
Now, I, I did talk to Brian and told him I've got two other people that might be willing to go in as well and help upgrade that road.
There'll be, there'll be some, some discussion on the road upgrading further.
Does he understand he's going to have to do that?
Yeah.
So, we're playing with power.
There, this is, this is just a, they're, they're not gonna need to provide drainage stations, drainage plant. I feel like on these, this large of lots, without having to do any significant construction inside the property, as, 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 building roads or bringing in infrastructure in the property, I, I, I feel like it's not necessary or something.
So, Brian, uh, to the far right there at Lot 12, what's to the right of that is Harold and Eleanor Cameron family? Is that just pasture land, is that the creek, or?
More farmland.
Is more farmland?
More farmland. This is right, this is right on the south side of the middle Sulphur River. As you, as you head north from here, maybe a mile or, or half a mile, you drop down into the Sulphur River box. So, that's what we're dealing with here. This, this running off in one of the, the theaters that runs down into-
It's on the backside to west side of the Ford Dodge dealership, is where it is.
Right, yeah. Going, going east of here.
Yeah.
Bringing up right next to the Ford dealership there.
I'm just curious how much water we're dumping over there on that, to the east of that property?
No, there's actually a creek area running pretty close to the east line of this, of this vision where this water's flowing to. That farm that's, that's on the east side of it is running to that creek as well. So, it's not, it's not running across the neighboring property, it's running to the-
They're not really changing the direction of any water. They're maybe adding just a little bit more water, but they're not changing directions of it.
And even, even in, on the-
It's minimal.
Fully developed, uh, and you're not talking about increasing it.
I think South Sulphur can handle it.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Commissioner, entertain a motion for approval of action item number 23.
Make a motion to approve the prelim, preliminary plat for Cedar Ridge.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Does that, does that, does that motion include the upgrade?
Upgrade of what?
This is just, uh-
Just-
Okay.
Just a first look.
Yeah, preliminary. They still have to come back for final, to make sure then that they've got their agreement with us, put up their escrow money. Okay, I got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 24, the final plat of Worley, 1106 Edition, precinct one.
Uh, as ample furnished, did you notice all the large copy, did you get some of the diesel hauls, or should we have smaller copies of the revised plat, to find a little bit of lucky easements? Are you agree with me, nuts, little oil sand road, it's got ample furnished, so we can, it's a, it's a, it's a one lot plat.
Entertain a motion for approval of action item 24.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 25, the final plat of Merritt, 1106 Edition in precinct one.
This is just southeast of the world of 1106 Edition. This guy's got his house, well, like, being furnished, and the road is very different on this corner. It's very all rain driven. I, I saw a property question that he had, you know, it's just a name, he's purchasing it for a pay metal, because it's under, just, he's having a plan, trying to follow the rules. But he's, he's, he's requested that, that the road, road state, that he's not required to upgrade it. According to the subdivision, which he's got a, it's got some-
Danny, in discussion with you, Mark?
Uh, I spoke with Brian, but not directly with, with Mr. Merritt.
And, uh, by the, by the subdivision regulations, if it's ag land and it's going to remain an ag, he technically does not have to platter. That is an exception to platter. It's, it's still an ag. Uh, he's, he's trying to play by the rules, he's trying, trying to be right.
We only get one shot at him, though.
It's, it's-
If we, if we approve the plat and then, then it's not upgraded, then it falls back in our lap.
What, we approve it, it, when it comes out of ag?
Uh, he doesn't necessarily say that. He says that for the plat, he proved that road down, you know, he approved conditionally, uh, on, you know, waiting on the, but, um...
I don't think we need to approve the plat unless he puts up escrow money to upgrade it.
And, you know, it's, uh, one of those things that we wanted to tell you, looking, and it's further discussion with him, where he may very well withdraw the plat whenever he comes up, he's gonna have to break the, there, it's his right to do, if he doesn't have any plat, because it's still an ag.
When you, when you make that curve, and I guess head north towards the, the seller's place, I think you said there was a house or something, has it paved up there somewhere? So, we just, that, this is dirt, just connecting two paved roads?
1106 is a, is a horseshoe road that has 1101, which is being upgraded now.
Right.
Actually, 1101 is here on the, the east side of this property. The, the seller lives on the, is trying to access it from the, the oil sand part of 1106. This is just one little odd mall leg of, of 1106 that's dirt, and then 1101's dirt.
And to clarify, Brian, this, this section of 1101 is not, not being approved.
Oh, this was not, 1101 from-
1101's a very long road, it's, it's further in north.
Yeah, you're following around, but 1101's part of, uh, the, 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 1101's just dirt, wide legs through there, several sections of it, of the dirt, several that are dropped oil sand already, but, uh, it's just more of a section of dirt.
Have we got, have we got time to table it till the next meeting? You know, the clock, is it running?
Uh, we've got time, we've got time. This was submitted last Tuesday, I believe, so-
Maybe we need to table it.
I think we'll table it, and, Luke, Mark, you probably need to talk to them, figure out what, give them some prices for upgrades.
Yeah, I, I agree. Let's, let's, let's table it, and I'll talk to them.
May I ask this? What is the footage that needs to be upgraded?
Quite a bit, yeah.
Yeah, it's quite a bit.
That's 10, 11, 11, 12.
Yeah, and you're talking about a great 1200 feet from rock and there's oil sand.
It's dirt now, so you gotta go to rock and then oil sand.
Yeah, it's gotta go rock and then oil.
Uh-huh, same table.
Okay, we'll table, uh, action item 25. Action item 26, final plat of Wood Creek Edition, precinct three, this is one we talked about earlier, and action item 22.
Correct. Uh, because the final plat up, now this is nowhere, it'll, it'll be approved, but not accepted, because we've got a lot of road to build, infrastructure to put in. So, we're going to sign or to record as of yet. This will be approved, level final.
Now, this is, this is the first, I mean, plat that we've done with the new development, with the new rules, where the old rules, they had to put a performance bond to build the improvements. Now, we're not recording the plat until we accept all of the development of all of the roads, so the plat's not recorded, so they can't sell lots, they can't do anything. So, we won't get into a villages and loan note problem or anything.
That's right.
We got no, no performance bond, so we approve it, we don't sign it yet, but we have a, the court approves the plat. Now, all they gotta do is go perform and put the subdivision in, as the engineering plan says. Once the Commissioner goes out and is satisfied with it and brings it back to the court, we accept the roads and the maintenance of it, and they put up a maintenance bond, and then we sign the plat, and then he can start selling, or they, she can't. I think it's-
If they, if they choose to put a, to get a construction bond, they can get a construction bond, and we can go ahead and finalize the plat, sign it and report it, and before it's accepted, then there are all the construction-
We don't, we don't, I mean, I, rules, I think, say they don't do that now, so we don't have a villages and loan note.
There's the option, there's the option to go in.
Does it?
If they want to put up the construction bond and, and have it finalized, they can do that. Most, most people, we've seen, and I've talked to, and just sit on-
What does our, what, what does our rule say? That's what he's getting at?
Yeah, the rules, the rules state that you can still put up a construction bond, and then they make this bond afterwards, or it gives you an alternative sort, an alternative way to approve, in that you approve, they bill, and then they accept. Uh, or it gives you an alternative sort of, an alternative way to approve in that you approve, they build, and then they accept.
Okay, may I, uh, Dan, you ready?
Yeah.
On this one here, we need to say I'll make a motion that we approve this plat. Approve it, is that correct? Is that the terminology we need, Judge?
With, with, with the maintenance bond, if that's what they're gonna do.
Uh, it'll, it'll be approved, but it will have to come back before y'all can accept it.
Yes, I understand that, but we're approving it today. We're approving it today, correct?
Now you're confusing me. I mean, there's no reason if there, if we have to, if it has to come back for us after accepted to record it, there's no reason for them to put up a, a performance bond, because we're not going to accept it. And there's nothing recorded and we don't have a village of the loan note problem where nothing gets built and they sell lots. That's what the intent of that change was.
Of course, you, you have to make a bond, see your act.
Right, but the performance bond is upfront.
No, the performance bond, they don't have to put up unless they want to go ahead and get this thing recorded. If they put up a.
Did they say they wanted to do that or don't?
Uh, they, they didn't say either way. I have a feeling that they would rather wait for that road to.
Okay, that's why I misunderstood something earlier. I thought they were wanting to do the performance. Because there, I had several developers tell me they didn't want that anymore because those performance bonds have become apparently very expensive. And, and they don't want to pay for it.
You just not made mention of putting up the performance bond.
Okay, all right, perfect. I got, I'm sorry, I got us off track probably there. Uh, so all we need is a motion for approval of the plat at this time, but then we don't accept it until later, so.
That's right, but in, in doing this approval, they cannot build anything until it's done, correct? Unless they put up a maintenance, I mean.
They can't sell any lots because the plat will be recorded.
They can't, they can't sell any lots. They can't, uh, they can't do anything with the lots as far as building houses or putting some of the lots.
Even, even the houses that they build. They can't even build their own houses, correct?
That's correct. They, they can build the road. They have to have the, the road and the infrastructure in.
That's correct.
Before they get the, the maintenance bond, before it's accepted, before they make the settlement.
Right. All right.
Your honor, I make a motion that we approve the final plat of Wood Creek addition in precinct three. Approve.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Uh, action item 27, the final plat of Williams Estate in precinct four.
So the plat, uh, the house already on it. They're selling the house, keeping the home. Uh, you know, everything's fine. It's a simple one block lot.
Entertaining, entertaining motion for approval?
So move.
Second. Sure.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action item number 28, uh, the final plat of Red Key addition in precinct four.
There again, uh, the house already present in the old property. Uh, he's flipping off. He actually lives on the farm now. Uh, this is a house, uh, a buttered long house, it's under, yeah, that's the term for everything. Utilities already, already serviced and now it's pretty, pretty simple deal.
Roads upgraded and all. Entertaining motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Action item number 29, the acceptance of high bids received on resale properties as follows. Account number R 113323, bid amount $2,250. R number 25646, uh, bid amounts $1,000. R number 70459, bid amount $2,860. R number 113320, uh, bid amount of $950. R 27361, bid amount $2,500. Uh, R number 27362, bid amount $2,500. Entertaining motion for approval of action item 29?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Uh, approval of accounts payable?
I make a motion with both the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers.
Make a motion for approval of line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments.
Make a motion for approval of budget amendments?
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel.
Make a motion to approve, uh, payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under items.
One and four.
One and four?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We're going into executive session at 10:55.
Let me know when we're live.
Live.
Okay, it's 12:04, we're back in regular session. I entertain a motion to recess until 2 o'clock this afternoon.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second on the paper, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We're recessed till 2 o'clock this afternoon. Okay, I'm gonna leave all my... Sandy? There you go.
We've taken care of everything on this panel, everything.
Alright, you gonna call Mayor Daniel or you?
Except for the President.
Oh, that's it, so we've taken care of everything.
Alright, okay.